All right, 701 will call meetings to order. Mr. Buntner, would you lead us in the closing regents?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The records show Mrs. Wertz and Mr. Dowdner are absent, however, they may be showing up a little bit late. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
It's a public comment. For policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in a period of public comment must be a resident of the Richmond School District, a parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must physically be present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comment. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to the participant with one of the first three minutes being designated for the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Did you get any sheets, Mrs. Steele?
No.
We did have a regular public comment, and then we had a public comment regarding policy 3112.01, organizational chart. Seeing no public comments, move on to reports. District Administrator's report.
So just a couple of upcoming meetings for the board and the public. Next Thursday, October 19th, will be committee meetings. We will have our personnel starting at 6 o'clock, and Buildings and Property starting at 7:15. And those meetings will be held at the Richmond Center Primary School in the gymnasium. And that is on Thursday, the 19th of October. Then, for all of our stakeholders in our community, we will have our annual meeting on Monday night, October 23rd. That will begin at 6:30 PM, and that will be held right here in the Richmond Center High School IMC. And then finally, a special board meeting on Monday, October 30th, starting at 7 PM. And that will be where the board will adopt the budget and set the tax levy for the 23-24 school year. Annual meeting at 6:30 on the 23rd, and special board meeting on the 30th, starting at 7 o'clock. Any questions from the board?
To board member reports.
So the policy committee met on Thursday, October 5th, discussed the scheduling rights, made a couple adjustments to that. We needed to add the Neola policies in the commemoration of school facilities on to our November agenda. Again, just the volume of policy changes we're going through, and then we had some further information that we needed to get for the commemoration of school facilities, for the naming rights essentially. And we also talked about the policy 3426, the early retirement for teachers. Policy is going to be sending that back to the Personnel Committee for some further discussion, personal adjustments on some of the wording of the motion or recommendation of the personnel that made. And then, we're also looking at the job description review cycle and working on some of the wording for that to ensure that we are actively looking at job descriptions on a regular basis instead of it to help eliminate the volume of job descriptions that are quite old as far as the power descriptions are written out. And then we went through some technical updates for the Neola, for the policies, and we'll have some others that we're continuing to go through to make some language changes on those. And we should be completed with those after our next meeting. We'll bring those to the board following that.
Curriculum assessment public relations committee met Thursday, October 5th. We covered our schedule at glance. November's going to be a very busy month, so we may have to have a second meeting in that month for our committee. We recommended the approval of the intermediate schools greenhouse, which has already been recommended by Buildings and Property. That's on consent tonight. Schools on update. We had to reschedule that meeting with Student Council. They've been rather busy for the homecoming week, and so next month we should have some finalizing of that. We reviewed the people to staff report for course analysis, which gave a breakdown of the total number of students that every teacher sees on a daily basis, which was rather informative. We covered some preliminary talks on high school course offerings draft for what will be offered next year. And the 2023 summer school review, it was successful. We had more students than the previous year, and they're looking at possibly expanding offerings in the future. And lastly, we discussed some of our goals and priorities and how curriculum can influence that. That's all. Questions from the board? Thank you. To Agenda 5A, approval of prior median minus of September 25, 2023. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Billings, is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Mr. Billings.
Aye.
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 I'm staying.
Aye. On to financial items. 6A, approval of statement of cash.
I move to approve the statement of cash dated October 4th, 2023.
Motion by Mr. Billings, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Wertz. Mr. Bosworth, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing to add on the statement of cash, sir.
Discussion. Ms. Ratsel.
Aye.
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 6B, approval of invoices.
I move to approve Community First Bank General Checking Account checks number 85645 through 85683, and ACH number 232400288 through 232400373, for a net total of $782,525.77. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion made by Mr. Billings, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, and Mr. Huntimer. Mr. Bosworth, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, a couple things. We did have some expenditures released early. Those were mainly for payroll benefits officials. A couple things to note, on page two, about halfway down, there's an expenditure for tumblers, badge holders, lanyards. And then there's an accompanying one on page six, about halfway down, staff t-shirts. It's part of the marketing budget and marketing campaigns. Those were gifts for the employees, all centered around school spirit and all holding the Hornet insignia to start the school year. And then I would also draw your attention to page seven, about halfway down, premier co-op. That's a payment for appropriate fuel. Hopefully, that's the extent of our fuel costs this year.
Mr. Huntimer.
Aye.
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 Mrs. Steele, consent to agenda items.
To accept the donation of a gift card valued approximately $50 from the Richmond Center Walmart, to approve the 23-24 snowplowing advertisement specs, timeline, and bid form, to approve the revisions of job descriptions as presented effective immediately, and to accept the contracted OT service agreement for occupational therapy assistant services with the Richmond Hospital for the 23-24 school year, approve the WIAA co-op agreement with the Ithaca School District for the Boys and Girls Cross Country Team for the 24-25 and the 25-26 school years. And that is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items?
I don't have a motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Dickman, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, and Mrs. Wertz. Discussion.
I had a question. The contract for OT services, is there a reason why we do that in October? Is it something to do with fiscal or the scheduling through the hospital itself?
No. One of the biggest challenges that we had with OT services this year was whether or not the hospital would be able to meet our needs. And so, it took a little figuring out what we were going to do. I think Mr. Joe Sam had mentioned at an earlier meeting that we would be contracting with CISA III to try to do the OT services, but some of the occupational therapy assistance can still be done through the Richmond Hospital, and so that's why this contract is being done then.
So that's a fluid process depending on the needs of our students year over year?
Correct. Typically, we would try to do it a little bit earlier than this year. Am I missing anything on that, Mr. Joe Sam?
No, it's typically done in August, because of this issue the hospital had this year and us trying to find our own. So we're rare.
So with it being later, have we missed out on any occupational therapy treatment?
Yep. So those minutes will have to be made up for the IP. Yep. So I've got a few parents reach out with that concern, but like I told them, I didn't really want to communicate that out until we had a formalized plan. With your approval tonight, and CISA III finding, CISA III finding a supervisor for us, and we got word of that just this week, I will tell parents now that how we have a plan, a formalized plan. This is how we're going to be making it those minutes.
Thank you. The occupational therapy assistant through the hospital, they can only work under a licensed occupational therapist, and so having one, the hospital quotas would not even be, it would still not be able to do anything until we actually had this certified occupational therapist through CISA. So both of those pieces kind of had to work together before we could finalize this plan.
Any further discussion from the board? Mrs. Dickman.
Aye.
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 Aye. Is there a motion? Nope, actually. Let me do it again. And I apologize, on the 25th meeting, I missed the Salvation Army, donorschoose.org, Shriver Foods, Go宏宏's LLC, Simple Elegance, the RSD Foundation, Rotary Foundation, and the Peter R. Marsh Foundation for their generous donations. And for tonight, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd also like to thank Walmart for their donation as well. Is there a motion to approve the modified agenda?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Billings, is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Aye.
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 To Agenda 9, information and discussion items. 9A, district transfers and vacancies.
So similar to what you've seen in the past, we've got a couple of support staff positions out there, food server, as well as a night custodian. We've got those posted and continuing to try to lead through our applicants and get somebody hired for those. And then, our certified staff, again, we've got the occupational therapist position posted. We'll continue to post that even though we have a plan in place, as Mr. Joe Sam alluded to earlier, with CISA, as well as a part-time art teacher. We've got, again, got a plan in place for that. And then we do have a cross-categorical teacher at the intermediate school, which we will bring to the board later on. Those are our vacancies right now.
Any questions from the board? 9B, the tree at RCPS.
So this is a informational topic for the board. This has been through the committee level, and we'll allow Mrs. Hardy to just give a brief overview on the tree at the primary school, please.
The tree at our primary school came about as a acknowledgement and honor to Vicki Cang, one of our retirees this last year. It started because we know being outdoors is a passion and a love for hers, and it kind of grew, no intention upon there, but it kind of grew from there to allow us to have an effect on our students, having enhanced green space, having some more shade on our playground. And our PTO is willing to fund the expense of the tree, so it was just a matter of really determining where the best location would be. And then moving forward, as other individuals retire from our district, we'd like to continue this. And then, again, getting some more shade space, because if you're out at the playground, there isn't much shade on our playground, and so this will definitely be a bonus for years to come. And a way to recognize our amazing staff that have been with us. Any questions that you might have?
Would you intend on putting some sort of signage, similar to the bike path with...
I'm not sure, because I don't know how to do that necessarily as we continue, because when you put signs at a certain height, and when you think of the height of our littles, they're creative already, so that might be a nice step-up spot into a tree. That would be nice to do. I don't know otherwise, if maybe we can do a recognition somewhere inside the building saying, you know, this tree is planted in this year is in recognition of. Something like that, I think, might be more feasible rather than having a standing piece.
Sure.
We have creative paths, but I do think that would be good to recognize in some Any other questions?
Thank you. To 9C, the greenhouse at the Richmond Center Intermediate School.
So similar discussion. This had went to both Buildings and Property and Curriculum, and came with an endorsement from both of those. And the intermediate school is looking at doing some, having a greenhouse and wrapping some curriculum around that, and I'll let Mrs. Brown give an overview on that.
So I had some staff that had approached me as we look at our science curriculum, and again, looking at how our students are learning. And with our science department, they had proposed that we are already using our garden outback, and so how could we further that and bring it into our classrooms? And so, I said, "Let's go for it." And so they want to look at building a greenhouse in the back to, again, tie into our science standards, but also then kind of expand and use it with our SEL type thing, or type lessons. But again, have it be a third through fifth grade focus, as a lot of what they're doing with any greenhouse would be related to what they're teaching in science as well. And something they could use throughout the full year, and depending on what comes from it, you know, do some sort of fundraiser or end of the year celebration with either flowers and using them, or vegetables, and so forth and so on, but then transposing those into our actual garden that we do have throughout the summer. And then that food that is raised in the garden, we do give that, is collected and brought up here to Jovi to use within various of our food service, with our food service staff and the meals that we prepare.
And I think, just to add, like, to pay for that would be through grants, was my understanding, and maybe some fundraising if the grants fall through, but...
Will there possibly be some opportunities to tie into the high school tech end program with the building itself?
They're probably moving. I know for this group, they were like, "What do we do first?" And I said, "Honestly, let's take it to our committees, let's, you know, take it to the board and let's see where it goes at." So yes, trying to work with whoever we can to help support that.
Any other questions from the board?
Will that topic be something that's on the next regular meeting? Just so we don't delay the process of seeking those grants and kind of hard evidence, so to speak?
What...
The greenhouse, I misspoke earlier and said it's not consent, but recognize it as info only. Will there need to be any full board approval to move forward, and if so, will that be soon?
Yeah. Okay, so to answer the first question, no, we can just go forward with it. This is just something we're letting the board know. If there's any grants or donations, obviously, the board would accept the grant or the donation at that time.
To 9D, the wall mural at Partner School.
All right. Kind of keeping with the theme of some great things that we're just trying to let the board know and be aware of that's happening at our different schools. This has also been to the different committees, and looking at doing a wall mural at the Partner School, and I'll let Dr. Johnson maybe give a quick overview on that, if you would, please.
Sure. We have, as you know, the building that we have Partner School in is a place where we are wanting our students to feel at home. And so, in moving through all this process, you know, letting them choose their office furniture, you know, we have things that are left over, and trying to make their space their own, they're wanting to individualize some wall space now. And so we have in your packet, you'll see two pictures of designs that students have made. One is, it's like a lavender looking, like, is there like meat? Yes, it's some lavender with some green backgrounds. It's a, that exact picture is what they're planning to paint. One of the walls, if you remember in the Partner School, most of you who are on Buildings and Property were able to see the location of it, but it's actually facing in the very first room where it used to be an office that, like, where people would check in when they went with that building. It's really inside of that space. And then, the second picture you'll see is designed by one of our students. It's got some facial features on it. That will go inside one of the middle rooms where students' workspace is also. So they've been taking a lot of time and planning, using this as some of their kind of credit gaining options, you know, where they're trying to do some measurement and figure out volume and do some art at the same time. Does anybody have any questions about the two items?
Will both of, I guess, these two specifically in future, will they be signed by the people that worked on them, the individual artists that created the design?
I don't recall if that's practice. It used to be, but now we have policy, I would need to look at that. That's a great question. And it would have an expiration date too, as all of our wall murals do.
That was my next question. Thank you. Yeah. Now, if one of the students' designs, if they were a senior and will no longer be here next year, will the option exist for whoever's in that room to replace that seat? Possibly be able to redo that one next year?
Yes, as long as it's, you know, everyone involved is okay with that. But you, you know, the point of making it feel like a space they want to stay in for long periods of time means to personalize it, so hopefully, if they're looking at someone else's art, maybe someone would choose it because of it, that space, or maybe they just want to do something different.
And then, did the students all agree on these two?
Well, actually, the rooms in that building are pretty separate, so these aren't common spaces. These are, like, there's, the front room that I was explaining has three students in it. Those three students are working on that project. And then the other one is an individual is in that space, and so it's just that student.
Thank you. Mr. Billings, to answer your question, policy 7250 talks about those guidelines, and we typically do not put the artist's name on there, just to be able to have, stand the test of time, so that's what our current policy is.
Thank you. 9E, the final draft budget for 2023-24.
So as Mr. Bosworth is handing out his supplemental material, you've seen a couple of different draft budgets for 23-24, a lot of unknowns. We had in July, a little bit more known in August, we know quite a bit more now in October. Our third Friday count has passed, the last piece that we're really waiting on is the October 15th certification aid. And then some upcoming meetings. Again, that annual meeting on the 23rd, the stakeholders of the school district will listen to the budget hearing, and then the board will make the final adoption and set
Good evening. This is a, hopefully a document you're familiar with, who's used this. This will be the third time now, so we're just going to look right at this document and try to draw some of the changes or... And this would also be an electronic document inside of Board Docs, for those of you who are following that way. So the first thing I would draw your attention to would be line 6 and 14. You can see those kind of gold colored blocks. We're getting, we're getting much closer. These are, these are pretty specific numbers, but they could both change somewhat slightly after the 15th, but we've got our information submitted to the DPI, so the equalization aid on line 6, that's the money that the state gives to us for Fund 10. And then, line 14, that's the extra to get to the revenue limit that we would levy from the public. If, just to remember, these things work in tandem. So if the state were to come through and tell us line 6 is going to be a little bit more, that doesn't necessarily mean more revenue for our school district. It means that line 14 would decrease to stay even there. Okay? Second thing I would draw your attention to is line 22, there's a red box, and then there's a corresponding box on page 60, which is actually on the next page. So those are both dollar values for open enrollment. So page, or line number 22 there, open enrollment in, so you can see that's an increase. So we have, we have more students open rolling in this year than we did prior, so that's increased revenue for us. And then on page 60, or excuse me, line 60, another red box there. You can see that dollar value, $2,324,151. That's the dollar value that goes out. It could be our revenue. It goes out because it follows the students who open roll out. It's a pretty significant dollar value that is not a surprise to us. We've seen that trend for a number of years now. What's interesting about this, though, is we actually have fewer students open rolling out this school year, but yet the way the formula changed, the dollar value that goes out has increased. So it's a, it's a nice feeling to have fewer students leaving and more students coming in, but those are the two dollar values associated with that. Third thing I would mention there is that, just in regards to enrollment in general, if you looked at our senior class that left and the young class of 3K, 4K that came in, one would expect a swing of about 50 students. It's a demographic scenario. We're only down about 20 students, so that's a positive for us, that's working against That's working against the trend line that was showing there. The fourth thing I would draw your attention to is line 25. There's a gray box there, so we'd been holding off and putting it on there, but now with becoming a much more firm offer on the sale of Jefferson, we've included that dollar value for revenue. And then a corresponding gray box on line 67, on page two, maybe it's 68, I think, says Partner School, so we do have a dollar value in there for a budget for our Partner School. And we were hoping those two would kind of offset each other, and that is the way that has played out, assuming that the sale of Jefferson does, does go through final. The fifth thing I would draw your attention to, we've mentioned this before, but just maybe one more time. Line 45 shows a revenue for the CCLC grant. And then there's a corresponding blue box on page two on line number 97, so that's a grant. And grants are meant to be spent on specific things, so the dollars that come in are the same dollars that are supposed to go out. But the CCLC, the STING program is up and running and doing well, and we've secured some vehicles for to bring those students home and some other equipment. And we have more, many more expenditures to go throughout the school year to make that program work. And that's, Emily, is that a three or a five-year program? A five-year program if we continue with that. So that's, continues to be a big positive for our school district. Just getting started with that. The sixth thing I would draw your attention to is on page two, there's some, there's a yellow box there, instructional salaries and benefits. It's down just a little bit from what we were, you know, speculating in July, but Amber and I sat down and put a lot of detail into our wage sheet with all our employees, so that's a, that's a pretty accurate number there. Just wanted to let you know that's pretty firm. The seventh thing I would draw your attention to, just in case you're wondering, on page, on line 72, maintenance. We've combined those two budgets there. It used to be maintenance in line 72 and operations in 76. We've just merged those two. If you're wondering about the dollar value, it's basically the same. I think our 1.636 million there is maybe 30,000 more than we were anticipating in, in July. On line 80, there is, excuse me, I'll draw your attention to line 79, utilities. We're just projecting, I think we built in about a 4% increase for utility costs this year. Line 80, that's some dollar values of things that we had thought we were going to get to last year, and we're allowed to take some money and designate into fund balance so that we can expend it the next year. That would be things like working on the scoreboards. That was one of the things we hoped to do last year. We're able to get to it. The wheels are in motion for this year. A lot of that money's been earmarked and spent already. The ninth thing I would draw your attention to is on the third page, line 114, there's a green box there, 2.207. That corresponds with line 59 on page two. That's a, that's a revenue for special education, but it's an expenditure for Fund 10. So it's just an accounting thing. I wanted you to notice those, those two numbers were the same. And then, so finally, I'll draw your attention to the end of page three. We have some colored boxes here. So if you look at that green box, we project that our revenues this year will be $23,350,612. The red box, we project that our expenses for this year will be $25,846,298. I also want you to remember, and the yellow box, first let me say, so that's a difference of $2,495,686. But I want you to recall that we have $2,465,686 in claimed ESR costs that we've shifted into fund balance that will pay for the majority of that. So really, there's a difference of about $30,000, the negative, that is not accounted for at this time. And then maybe just a couple of comments about 2.46 in expenditures. On line 81, if you can look at line 81, there is ESR earmarked expenses. So those are one-time costs. These are, a lot of these are things the board has already approved to spend money on. A lot of the money has been spent already. So of that 2.4, we're talking about there, about 1.8 of it is one-time expenses. So it's not something that we're going to have a huge deficit on next year. The other point, six, is, is in salaries. We made a commitment to, to pay our employees competitively a couple of years ago. And so that's, that's a potential shortfall as you look into the future of $600,000. But at the same time, when we made those decisions, we also made decisions that there would be staffing positions and administrative positions that would be reduced. So that, that dollar value, you know, may be nullified to some degree by those reduced positions as well. Okay. What questions do you have? I'll do my best to answer them, and if I can't, we have Mr. Board here, who's extremely knowledgeable, he can help as well.
Do we know what the October draft, what the property tax rate looks like? Any change to that from July?
No. The school board made a commitment a number of years ago to try to maintain a constant levy rate for the community, and I think that's the plan. That's the plan we're operating with, is to be consistent.
That rate was, and has been, $9.12 per thousand. That's been our mill rate. And Mr. Bosworth just said, our plan is to keep that at $9.12. So our tax rate for the third year in a row would not go up. But again, I mentioned this at a board meeting, a couple of board meetings ago, that appreciation in property value has gone up. And so people now, generally speaking, own more property value, okay, as property values have increased. So that percentage of inflation and appreciation would go up correspondingly, but our tax rate would stay the same at $9.12.
Questions from the board? Thank you. 210, action items. Policy 3112.01 organizational chart, second reading.
Okay, so this is the, the second reading of the Policy 1100.01, the employee organizational chart. Again, this replaced an old policy that we had, Policy 204, which was the emergency chain of command. This was something that got neglected from the mass approval of policies in July 1. And so we put together an organizational chart. Our policies will reference those charts. Because it was omitted on July 1, we did have to consider a new policy. So there's a little table there in your Board Docs that states the different steps that have to happen for a new policy to become effective. First, it shall take place at at least two regular scheduled board meetings. They're in red. We had it on our September 25 meeting. It's again here on October 9. Secondly, that we needed to place that on an agenda item as information. We did that on the 25th. Second, that it was, or next, I should say, that it was, the public had an opportunity to voice their concerns or react to the policy. That was done through public comment earlier on tonight's agenda. Number three there was a discussion and consideration for the board to discuss. That is on right now for this agenda item here on October 9. And then finally, if the recommendation is to, after discussion is to have a final vote, then the board will look to adopt this policy and it will become effective immediately. Again, that's part of this agenda item. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Anbihan for a second actual reading of the Policy 1100.01, employee organizational chart, and then we can have discussion. And if the board so chooses, then we can look for a motion to adopt that policy. Go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Board. If an emergency occurs in the school district while the district administrator is absent from the district or incapacitated, the organizational chart shall be used to determine who is in charge of the district. In determining this flow, the chart shall be read starting at level one, followed by level two, left to right, followed by level three, top to bottom, then left to right. The district administrator may appoint an administrator prior to his or her absence, with the rest of the chain of command following in order as previously indicated within the organizational chart.
Does Board have any questions that I or the policy committee can answer prior to engaging in discussion that would help with your discussion? Okay, and for those that may be joining virtually, the organizational chart is attached as a PDF to this agenda.
Is there a motion to adopt Policy 3112.01 organizational chart as presented, effective immediately?
I'll make that.
Motion of Mr. Huntimer. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any further discussion, comments, questions from the board?
The only comment I have, what we did at this past policy meeting, with the changing of some of the language, that the district administrator may appoint an administrator prior to his/her absence. We are removing the his/her on all the other policies. We recommend doing that on this policy as well, so that it's addressed before it's put into place.
And so the wording would then be prior to their absence?
All right, so Mr. Huntimer amended his motion. Mr. Bailey seconded it. So the proposed change is then would be removing his/her, and it would be prior to their absence. Is what the change would be, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry.
Aye.
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 We move into closed session pursuant to under statutes 19.85, laws C and/or F as appropriate to consider employment, promotion, and compensation of employees for purposes of discussing individual employee hiring and compensation, and Wisconsin statutes 19.851F, and Wisconsin statutes 18.125, to discuss student open enrollment, applications, and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Oxonel?
Aye.
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 Thank you.